...make the presentation this evening. And again, this is a workshop. We're not looking for any action. But the fire department has been working on the update to the code. So we asked Randy to come and give you a briefing before we actually put the item on the agenda.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Up for consideration is the updating of our current fire code. The last adoption was in 2007. The code is proposed to be adopted pretty much as written and currently amended with a few notable exceptions. The code, as proposed, addresses our fire losses, technical advances, and our future development. In accordance with the international insurance organizations and the International Code Council that promulgate the codes, they recommend that cities stay current with codes and standards. And that's an effort in part of that direction as well. One of the notable advances that we're looking for here concurrent zone is the current sprinkler requirements that are in the code are set at 6,000 square feet. That is the threshold for commercial businesses. We're looking for consideration to reduce that threshold to 4,000 square feet. And that threshold reduction is, does not apply to one and two-family dwellings. It only applies to commercial occupancies. This is in line with some of the neighboring cities and area cities that are around us. To give you an example, Addison and University Park have zero square foot, square-footage thresholds. Farmers Branch has 2,500 square feet. University Park and DFW Airport have 4,000 square foot thresholds. University Parks is geared towards additions and alterations of the commercial property. Flower Mound, Relano, Capel, and Richardson all have set their thresholds at 5,000. Currently, Collville, Frisco, Keller, Ullis, Bedford, Hurst, South Lake, and McKinney still remain at 6,000 square foot. The fire department understands that you know what the value of fire sprinklers are in the commercial world. Recently, we suffered the loss of the Lacy Bones Restaurant at 120 Worth Street. That building was 4,100 square feet. It could be rebuilt possibly today without requiring fire sprinklers. One of the efforts of this reduction is to address that type of property. And at this point in time, if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer if I can.
Is this for only new construction?
It would apply to new construction and existing buildings when they were, had changed in occupancy use, say a warehouse to a movie theater, or to where it was, additions were added, or major alterations.
So if we have a shopping center that is being added on to change the site plan, then it would fall under state's code?
Yes.
That'd be very expensive, wouldn't it?
Very expensive.
You can make the same argument if it's 2,000 or whatever. The bottom line is, we're nearly built out in this community. Most of those buildings are already built. And so we're not like any other city. But when you look at the other cities, a lot of them are still at six. So, you know, I have a big thing about government being abusive or over-legislative or oppressive. That costs a lot of money. And you go as far as you want to with, but it doesn't, you know, it seems the international fire code is pretty well debated and pretty restrictive in many cases. And I would have to have a lot more information justified than me at this point in the history of the development of this entity impose that kind of cost on the buildings that still need to be built. And, you know, most of the fires are in the name of homes. It would be nice if everybody could afford to have them in every home and in every building. But it's just not feasible. So there has to be some balance between what you require, what you don't require. And to me, there's no urgency or no call to make a change unless you can provide that to me in the later.
Yes, sir.
All righty. Anybody else?
Yeah, I've gone through this and tried to figure out what we currently have. And what I'd like to see is an executive summary, Mr. Frisenger. I'd like to see a three-color chart, what our current code says, what the 2012 international fire code is encouraging that we adopt, and then these additional amendments that the staff is proposing so we can have the benefit. Because right now, up here is not in the perspective of here, we don't know what we're changing from and to because there's nothing in here that would gradually show it. So if you could come up with that, I think that would be a transparent thing that perhaps we could understand and kind of see what it is. Because there's a number of amendments in here that are proposed. And one that really got mine, I wonder was when you were talking about recreational fires and approved portable or permanent outdoor fireplaces or fire pits. I don't know what approved is. I don't know, do I go and get something that says approved off the shelf that blows or something? And so it's the wording in here that could be construed. I mean, I can approve it. I think it's fine if I buy it. But is it going to cost me a hundred-dollar fee to get it approved? If somebody wants a fire pit, are they going to have to come up to your office and we're going to have a line of people out there to get you to approve it if you'll approve it? So if you could come up with an executive summary with an apple, with a comparison among each three items that I just mentioned, I think that could be helpful for us to perhaps further evaluate.
I think we should do that honestly with any change that was regarded as in any way major so that you can see what you have today, what's proposed in the new code amendment so that it is very clear in terms of what the rules are existing today and what they're proposed to go to with the code amendment. So we'll do that.
Just later, I'm talking about anything mine or whatever. If there's a change in here that is proposed, I think we need to have.
Oh, just basically what you're talking about, it's a matrix. And we'll be glad to do that, sir.
Well, and I want to add based on what the mayor said because I think that there is an enormous added cost to folks to do this. I think it can be $5 a square foot or something to put in sprinklers system. I mean, it can be very expensive. We know what it costs to do it for the downtown. So I think Sharon makes a good suggestion to have a matrix. But I think, and I'm fine with keeping it at 6,000 square feet, but to even consider to change it, I need to know what that added potential cost is and some examples as to sort of what sort of burden we're adding to some of these property owners and some of these landlords and so forth. Because I think it could be quite substantial. I mean, if it's really needed, then obviously we need to talk about it. But I have some real reluctance of going from 6,000 square feet to a smaller square footage.
It seems to me too, of the commercial buildings that are going to be built in this town, most of them are going to be 6,000 square feet or larger that will pick it up anyway. Or it's going to be less than 4,000 square.
I understand. We do.
So, you know, it may just be academic. I don't know.
No, but I do, I will say this. I mean, we wanted to make sure that we brought the square-footage issue to council. And then we did draft an ordinance that had the 4,000 square feet without having a conversation about whether or not y'all were amenable to that discussion or not. I think we got our direction tonight. And we will come back with the matrix and at the next council meeting along with the code.
I'd like to ask one more question. In regards to residential, you said this would not apply residential. What's our standard in terms of residential currently?
6,000.
It is 6,000. So they follow their different type of sprinkling requirement, I know, is to get the people out safely.
Yes.
And my, I guess, I have to say, I feel like eventually every building that's built in the United States is going to be sprinkled. I see that coming. But my concern is for a town like Gray Falls, we have so much property that is older and needs redevelopment. And we'll eventually have a master plan, a site plan change. And we can't be tied, our pants are tied behind our back to be able to prove that because we're making this developer add a significant additional cost to bring and retrofit an entire building. That's my big concern with the, with the.
Well, it comes back to, again, recognizing what the matrix is all and knowing what buildings we're going to be talking about. I mean, it's, I've got to concur with what the mayor said. I think anything that's going to be built is going to be in excess of 6,000 or will be certainly below that threshold, or 4,000 or less. And I can't see that that much smaller is going to take place. And so I really, I want to see what we've got and what's being proposed to understand really, Randy, the full difference in the scope of the process.
One of the big problems that my police brought out is in remodel. And.
Mark, as a ground audio, get it some more.
We will. And we have our, it's a good dialogue. We have our direction. We'll come back to council. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All righty.
Mrs. Severson, I think we're ready.
We have a joint seating with the planning commission and the council coming up by Sunday. Our commission is going to go ahead and take their seat. We would call that meeting in order. Any of you sit here?
I'm here.
Okay, we, we'll begin the regular meeting of the city council. The chamber passed for 7:30. We begin that meeting traditionally with an application, pledge of allegiance. Commissioner Herb Frisenger will deliver those. Will you please rise?
Great. Father, we gather together tonight just to ask for you to be present in our hearts and our minds so we can do things that you would have us do with the city in this great, wonderful land that you've given to us. And just ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Let's lead. In the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, to be visible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome you to our meetings tonight. Next, have scheduled five joint public hearings between the planning, zoning commission, and the council. These are joint meetings, and we will open the public hearing on each case. We will take testimony from the applicant. Any guest residents that would like to speak for or against the application can register with Ms. Brown and get on the attendance to speak. And she'll recognize you in the order that she registered. After the public hearings are closed, the planning, zoning commission reconvened separately later this evening and will consider the applications and make recommendations to the council. So we'll begin by opening the public hearing on conditional use application, C14-13. Mrs. Strombach, if from the staff, introduce the request that has been made.
Thank you, Mayor. We have an address of 1150 Texan Trail for this request. It's located southwest corner of East Dallas Road, Texan Trail. Currently is owned L.I.L. Industrial District. And our request this evening is allow for a truck and trailer rental, trailer leasing, or excuse me, a trailer rental, lease sales, vehicle maintenance, and fuel. Our site plan here shows the existing ride and truck rental facility. It's been there for quite some time. The applicant intends to incorporate an additional 1.02 acres as to the mortuary screen, the top of the screen. This will be utilized for some additional maintenance and office uses. There's also an existing structure on the side that's 5,360 square feet. It's going to be doubled, nearly doubled in size to 10,897 square feet, again, utilized for maintenance and office-related uses. The existing fueling operation will remain as shown on the plan. The applicant has added masonry to the existing structure as well as to the new addition. You will be, will be needing the masonry requirements. If you are considering improvement this evening, this will be the first reading of the ordinance. It will have to go to the board as an adjustment relative to front door landscaping sent back. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. Brandon Middleton to speak to your question.
Good evening, Mayor Tate, City Council. My name is Brandon Middleton with Kimley Horne Associates, 801 Cherry Street, Suite 950 in Fort Worth, Texas. Here representing rider and truck rental for the conditional use permit. And really here to answer any questions you may have in regards to our request.
Questions from Mr. Middleton.
I had a question about the size of your parking spots. Will they accommodate a trailer and a company cab?
Yes, sir. Yeah, it's a WB40 truck. It's kind of a mid-size semi-trailer. The length is, the width is 12 feet and the length of the truck and parking stall is about 46.
So the assumption is that's basically going to be full of your trailers then?
That's the assumption. If you go to their site today, a lot of the trucks are without the trailer. So I wouldn't say all of them are going to be completely full with the truck and trailer. But from a flexibility standpoint, that's what we're, that's the way it's set up.
Any questions? No questions. Questions from the council?
I have questions. Staff, please.
Yes, ma'am.
The issue that's requiring a variance for BCA, is that on the existing site or is that on the site to the north that has the circle around it in the drawing before us?
Only on the existing site. What they've done on the addition meets all the requirements, so it's.
Thank you. What are the typical hours of operation of this?
The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7 to.
What? Are you with the head of it?
I'm sorry, I'm with the charge.
I beg your pardon?
The charge. You have to go.
That's not time. What?
She's with the.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay, you make that part of it.
The hours of operation are Monday through Saturday, 7 to midnight. Allison Reynolds, I'm with ET Environmental, 3424 Peachtree Road, Atlanta, Georgia.
Does that satisfy?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions from the council? Does the applicant have anything further?
Yes, sir.
Do we have anyone wishing to speak?
No, mayor.
Do we have any letters of petition?
We have one letter, copy before you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, sir. Mr. Chairman. Do you want us to close the public hearing?
No, ma'am.
All in favor? Out of motion. The next public hearing is C14-14. The council, the PNC is voting to close the public hearing on 1413. A motion is in order.
Move to close.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Out of the next item, the applicant has requested withdrawal of the application. Mr. Chairman, what is the claim of the petition?
The applicant has requested to withdraw the application. We need a motion. Please, sir.
Second.
All in favor? The planning commission has voted to allow the applicant, J.C., 14X14, to withdraw the application. A motion is in order to the council.
Then we accept the withdrawal. Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. The application is withdrawn. Public hearing is now open on C14-15. Mr. Strombach.
This request is at Terminal E of DFW International Airport. The applicant's asking for on-premise alcohol beverage sales in conjunction with a new restaurant. What we have here is a new restaurant called Pizza Pub in Terminal E between columns 18 and 25. We have Mr. Mark Conmire here to speak. Do you have a question?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and the commission. I am here to request permission for conditional use of, allow for sale and consumption of alcohol beverages at Pizza Pub at Dallas Fort Worth Airport and Terminal C5. I'm available right now for any questions.
Any questions there? No questions? Questions from the council? Apparently not. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone wishing to speak?
No, mayor.
Any letters of petition?
No, sir.
Motion to close, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to close the public hearing? Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
The commission closed the public hearing. A motion.
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. The public hearing is closed. Public hearing is open on conditional use application, 14-18. Mr. Strombach.
We have an address of 100 Great Wolf Drive. It's located northeast corner of Texan Trail in State Highway 26. It is Great Wolf Lodge in Intercity Center. Currently is owned CC, Community Commercial District. Our request is to amend the approved site plan. This is for a blank commercial center with a hotel on Watermark specifically to allow the addition of an outdoor ropes course attraction. The applicant intends to incorporate this ropes course that's approximately 50 feet in height will be near the southeast corner of the hotel complex. Participants will be secured to an overhead lanyard system and they'll maneuver through a complex of cables, ropes, and boards. Staff member will be on each level to ensure the safety of all participants. I have a Mr. Ken Broome here to speak to the question.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council and commission. It's a pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Ken Broome, general manager at Great Wolf Lodge in 100 Great Wolf Drive. And we are looking for your support to move forward with this structure. It is a multi-level climbing structure known as a ropes course. It is a very unique attraction. It will be the first one in North Texas. I believe the closest one at this code is in Oklahoma City. So it's a project we're excited about and, as I mentioned, we hope that we're hoping to move forward with it. It would be a pleasure to answer any questions related to the course at this time.
Questions from Mr. Broome.
I was just curious. There's one Oklahoma City. How many are in the country? Do you have an idea?
There's probably, right now, I believe about somewhere between 24 and 36 of these courses around the country.
They're all.
By the company that we're looking to have it built with.
Pretty much a difficult at this point?
Some are smaller in size and I believe there's a few that are maybe a little bit larger.
Question. Ken, is this, I'm just curious, is this all used by hotel guests?
No, it is also going to be open to the public.
Did you, did you have to have an add pardon for that? Would you still fall into your parking cans?
We would still fall into our existing parking.
And how many, what's the capacity you think that would be?
If I remember correctly, I believe we have about 1,075 spaces on our property.
What, the capacity of the ropes course?
Oh, I apologize. 32 people at one time, of course.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Are they age limited?
There's a height limit, 48 inches for the main, for the larger course. We are also adding at the very lower level what is called a skydikes course. And it's about 24 inches off the ground for the smaller kids to walk around on and play if they're not high enough or tall enough to be on the main course.
I guess I was a little confused. I thought this was strictly for your guests, but it's, you're saying there's going to be another entrance to this?
Yes, sir. We will, we will allow guests from the outside that want to experience to come.
Other questions? Other questions?
Will it be open to the public every day of the week or just at certain time periods? Will it be structured in some way?
It's a great, that's a great question. As we start out, we will open it, set it, when the structure is open, it will be open to the public as well. And I think it'll be a learning, a growing experience for us as well as we see demand based on what the demand is for it.
And when do you anticipate beginning construction and having this facility open? It sounds exciting.
We're looking forward to it. It's, we are possibly waiting on the approval. And we do have construction partners lined up that we can begin within two weeks based on, you know, pending approval. And it takes, once we do the grading and then the concrete work, the actual ropes course itself, they are, that team erects it, and it takes them about three weeks to erect the structure.
Is it going to be in use this summer, then?
We are looking for first, second week of July to have that up and running. It can be first.
Is it a minimum of 48 inches or maximum of 48 inches? I hope I'm tall enough to get to use it.
Sounds like a council workshop.
I agree.
He's building it.
Does the applicant have anything further?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone wishing to speak?
No, mayor.
Any letters of petition?
We have one letter, copy before you.
All right. Mr. Chairman.
Do you want a motion?
The planning commission closed. A motion from the council.
Move to call the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Public hearing is open on C14-20. Mr. Strombach.
We have an address of 1639 West Northwest Highway. It's located within the Northwest Plaza Shopping Center. Currently is owned SP Site Plan Zoning. And a request this evening is to allow a retail store with sales of second-hand goods in excess of 3,000 square feet. If the applicant's intent to vacate a 1,400-square-foot lease space in the shopping center, as you all considered approved back in 2011, they have acquired or hope to acquire a 2,940-square-foot lease space immediately adjacent to the two spaces they currently occupy. This would bring a total they've approved of maybe 756 square feet. Hours of operation are Tuesday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The drop-off donation area that was a part of the previous 1,400-square-foot lease space that is being vacated will be moved to the south and part of the other complex. Hours will be the same. And with that, I'll introduce Mr. Philip Brusink to speak.
Mayor Tate, City Council, PNC. My name is Philip Brusink, and this is Sarah Bedepo. She is the manager of Angel's Attic. And I was here about three years ago to request this conditional use permit for the space we would like to vacate. And this opportunity to expand to this new space came about, about two months ago when the tenant moved out to another location. And so this would combine, move the, all the space into one location. And it just makes a lot of sense from a logistics standpoint and so forth. So we request your approval.
Mr. Chairman. Any questions?
Well, yes, you have one on the back, on your drop-off. It's just, basically looks like just a standard back door there where you drop off.
Just the back door.
Similar to the one you have before?
Yes, that would be closed down. This will be right at the back of this new location.
There'll be no storage outside? Everything will leave that and be brought inside?
No, no outside storage at all.
Other questions? Questions from the council? Turn it off. Thank you, Mr. Brusink. Do we have anyone wishing, did you have anything further?
No.
Okay, no. Thank you very much. Do we have any else? Anyone wishing to speak?
No, mayor.
Any letters of petition?
No, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to close the public hearing? Move to close.
Second.
All in favor?
The commission closed. A motion from the council.
Move to close. Second.
All in favor, all opposed. Public hearing is closed, and that completes the public hearings with the main, the commission and the council. Commission will reconvene in shortly. The meeting room to the right, it's a public meeting. You're invited to attend and to listen to their discussion if you would like. The council will remain in session here, and we'll begin with a citizen's request. And then we have some presentations. So we're invited to attend the meeting. It's here, I'm interested in. Any person that is not scheduled on the agenda may address the city council under citizens' comments by completing the citizen's appearance request form, the other form that Ms. Brown has. Pardon me. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the city council is restricted in discussing or taking action during citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments requests tonight?
Yes, Mayor. Carl Young, forty-one thirteen Meadow Drive.
First off, council, I have returned. In looking at the agenda for tonight, one thing popped out at me. And it's been a question that I've been asking for about a year and a half. And it has to do with seventeen dollars or basically my Adamus bill entirely. I had the privilege to put an approved gas line into my house a while back when I figured I'd dropped my electric bill, which I did. I had the, and I looked up to the gas line and to look at my first three bills, not using a whole lot of gas or cubic feet or inches of gas, whatever it is, I realized that I didn't use any gas, but I had a twenty-three dollar gas bill. So I looked at it, didn't understand it, tried to call Adamus to find out what was going on with the bill. And it turned out that it's basically fees, one of which you guys are going to deny tonight, which I support, that was seventeen dollars and change. So I guess my question to the council tonight is why, when I use roughly four dollars and fifty cents for gas, my bill averages twenty-eight dollars? That's almost eighty percent if my numbers are kind of correct. So I guess I'm going to have to see, I support you guys tonight in what you're doing with me denying this. I don't, I wasn't at the last meeting. I was in Wisconsin with a, with a death problem. So I don't know what happened at the workshop, but I don't know what happened at the council meeting. I apologize for that. But I do feel that it comes time for us as a people and as a council to start calling these people attached to just raising a bill because they need forty-five billion dollars or million dollars, whatever the number is. They're going to have some more explanations than that. And that's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Blum, twenty-one ninety-eight Language Drive.
Thank you, City Council. Honorable Mayor. I'm here today out of a golf cart ordinance in which we have been using golf carts on public roads throughout Grapevine area for about eighteen years. Department of Transportation laws were enforced last year to remove them from the streets. We had problems with kids vying the carts and so forth. Most of you know or are familiar with the issues in regards to that. I propose a workshop to review the ordinance I provided you allowing golf cart use as identified by the Department of Transportation laws. A number of cities have enacted laws such as these Fristo Trophy Club, which is one of our close neighbors. Also here, I've had about twenty-three pages of citizens of Grapevine here that have graciously signed their names to requesting this type of ordinance put in place so that allows responsible insured drivers the ability to use a golf cart on public roads with the proper equipment. And that's the most important part. We don't want to allow children or unlicensed drivers to, to operate a cart in an unsafe way. We really are looking for a safe and proper method in which we can still use the golf carts that are, that have been here in Grapevine for so long. And with this resolution, we believe that we will find an excellent solution to the folks that have the golf carts and of course, our police department that needs to be able to regulate that. And, you know, we would like to return the freedom to our Grapevine community and that these new laws and the police have taken away from us. And in some way, we'll be saving in gasoline and carbon emissions so that we can share a little hot air with our friends. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
No, Mayor, that's all.
All right. And that concludes the citizen comments tonight. The next area is some presentations. I have a couple of proclamations to present and then Mary Jo Telling is going to assist in presenting Sustain the Vine business and issue awards. And Mr. Joe Amore is going to make some announcements and help receive some awards that the American Land is seeking to give this year. The first proclamation is declare May twenty-fourth as Grapevine Historical Society Day. May of this year marks the fortieth anniversary of the charter of the Grapevine Historic Society. It's founded to preserve and remove the history of Grapevine. Grapevine Historical Society was instrumental in preserving, restoring, and furnishing the historic Torren cabin, which is a highlight to visitors in our downtown area. They also helped reclaim and save the St. Louis Southwestern Railroad Cotton Belt Railway Depot, where for over forty years they maintained a museum, a museum of the history of life on the Grapevine Prairie. The Grapevine Historical Society is currently preparing to move to the Grapevine Historical Museum at their new home in the nineteen forty Grapevine Ice Company facade in the Ted Art Ware Plaza on Hudson Church Street. The Grapevine Historic Society has published three award-winning books, Grapevine Area History, The Grapevine Most Unforgettable Characters, and The Image of America, Grapevine, which serve as rich resources of local history and our heritage. Grapevine Historical Society presents monthly educational programs at its meetings, often tours, history presentations for the community, leads Main Street tours for public school students, makes classroom presentations to keep the history of Grapevine alive and valued by our young people and all of our people. As a matter of fact, Historic Society gives special tribute in the Grapevine Historical Museum to the military service of his men and women throughout the years. And since there will be a new special area of focus in the new museum building to further honor the military service of our citizens, we're proclaiming May twenty-fourth as Grapevine Historical Society Day in honor of this great organization and its many members and the great works that they have done. Jolene Stanley is here to accept it and you have, I would thank the host of our supporters with you in your welcome to say whatever you'd like. Congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Tate, City Council, another guest here tonight. It's a privilege to accept this proclamation and to say that the Historic Society is a vital part of this community. And if you're not involved with it, we invite you to be because we're preserving the history of things in Grapevine, not just the people, but the things that they brought here. And we've many artifacts from all different areas of the great Grapevine Prairie as our forefathers came here to live, to enjoy, and to make their home. And as we have had people move into this area in the last forty years, it's interesting to know how much the city has grown and how much more giving there is to do here. And we must continue to be a supporter of history in all phases. And this Saturday, we will be having a fortieth birthday celebration on at two oh six Hudson Street. We have invited all the veterans to the come and we want to honor them because they're a valuable part of the historical work in the community. And thank you.
The next presentation, Memorial Day coming up, is given on behalf of the American Legion Auxiliary to honor servicemen who have made sacrifices in all of our wars. America is the land of the freedom preserved and protected willingly and freely by citizen soldiers. Millions have answered the call and arms have died on the field of battle. A nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the dead oath to those who died in war. The red poppy has been designated as a symbol of sacrifice and loss of lives in all wars. The American Legion Auxiliary has placed a reminder Americans' family of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flyer. So we're declaring the May twenty-fourth of this year as the Memorial Poppy Day and ask our citizens to wear that in honor of those who have made sacrifices in time of war. Mary Hall is here to accept the proclamation.
In nineteen fifty, during World War One, Lieutenant Colonel John McCray, M.D., wrote a poem called "Flamers Field." The blooming red poppies reminded him of the blood that was spilled by his dead comrades during that conflict. Those tiny flowers are made by veterans in rehabilitation in RBA hospitals. In two thousand thirteen, nearly three and a half million poppies were distributed by the auxiliary units of the American Legion. Their donations raised two, a little over two million dollars. And all of that money goes back to rehabilitate our veterans. We will be distributing poppies this Saturday in conflict with the Historical Society at the American Legion Post at twelve forty-five North Industrial Boulevard in Bedford from ten to four. We thank you again, Mayor, for this proclamation and recognizing the service and sacrifice of our soldier and our veterans.
Thank you very much. Next, Mary Jo Telling is going to come forward and announce the awards. And I, I guess if she wants me to assist her, can I come up?
Good evening, City Council and Mayor Tate. I just have a few words to say about the Sustain the Vine program and then we can go ahead and give out the awards. Over, over its history, Keep Grapevine Beautiful has engaged the community in helping coordinate volunteer projects that support the city's efforts to keep grapevines, parks, facilities, and roadways clean and sparkling. In two thousand and thirteen, Keep Grapevine Beautiful saw a need to engage the business community by partnering with them to accomplish even more in its endeavor to enhance the environment that makes Grapevine such a great place to live and do business. The first step in this effort is the Sustain the Vine Environmental Initiative. This program seeks to educate and motivate local businesses, large and small, to take action to adopt more sustainable practices in their everyday operations. The centerpiece of this initiative is the Sustain the Vine Scorecard. This very simple online questionnaire gives local businesses the opportunity to grade themselves on their sustainability efforts. It offers resources for those seeking to improve their practices and seeks to foster a cooperative competition among local businesses to move forward with their cause of sustainability and environmental awareness here in Grapevine. We owe it debt to those who helped evaluate and improve the Sustain the Vine Scorecard. Their time and input was crucial in the process of creating an informative and useful tool for promoting sustainable practices. And they made, and it made the scorecard far better than it possibly could have been without their help. So tonight, we would like to recognize the charter members of the Sustain the Vine Initiative. And we want to thank them for caring enough to be part of the Sustain the Vine Environmental Initiative. Mr. Mayor, I can call their names if you'd like to present their certificates? Our first awardee is the Gaylord Texan Resort. And here accepting tonight is Ann Maynor. Our second recipient is Impact Signs and Graphics. Here tonight is Joan Rossin. Our third recipient is Jolie Magoo from Cassantis. Our fourth recipient, do you have her? That was Jones. Pardon me, Joan. Our fourth recipient is Marshall Crane. And we have Jim and Joyce Conley here. Our next recipient is Plutka Insurance, Matt Plutka. Our next recipient is Weinberg Deli, Mr. Dan Weinberg. Our next recipient is Green Service Team, Mr. John Gonzalez. And our final recipient this evening is M.I.G. Realty, which is Teresa Mason, who is of course in the PNC meeting. We want to congratulate all of these leaders of sustainability here in our city and thank
Mr. Jerome Lauer. Now we have some announcement awards for our.
Mayor, just like to introduce, no relation, Mr. Michael Moore, the Assistant Executive Director of the Texas Association of Campground Owners and Operators, to make some presentations to the city Grapevine today.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm here tonight to not only present these awards to the Vineyards Campground, but also commend everyone involved in the creation and the sustainability of the Vineyards Campground. From the council, many years ago, who turned some core visionary land into what it is today, to a lot of the staff who's here this evening to see these awards. And last, but certainly not least, no relation, Mr. Joe Moore, who is retiring at the end of this month. So without further ado, I have some awards that the Vineyards recently won, including Website of the Year, Accommodations of the Year, Special Event of the Year, and perhaps most importantly, Medium Park of the Year. If you don't mind, I'd like to present these. First one is the Park of the Year Award. Next is the Website. Next is Website of the Year Award. Next is Special Event of the Year Award. Next is Special Event of the Year Award. And next is Best Accommodations for the Cabs at the Vineyards Campground Award. So again, thank you to everyone in the council and the staff and Joe.
And as the council knows, and I know, these are pieces of glass. They represent a lot of hard years that I'm going to miss, but at the same time, I know I'm going to be leaving in some good hands. But without the people behind me, the staff here, I want you all to stand up. These are the people that are behind us that make the Vineyards Campground and the lake parks, as award-winning as they are. I want to applaud them. So thank you all for all the support, and keep it up. I hope to see and read more about these awards in the coming years. So thank you very much.
And, Mr. Moore, we sincerely hope you enjoy your retirement.
New business, item 15 on the agenda. Consider our contract renewal with Fred Hill for Legislative Consultant Services, Mr. Robb.
Your Honor, we have a four-year, just a two-year contract renewal. As you recall, the last time, the city selected a lobbyist, we went through an exhaustive effort to do so. Fred Hill emerged as the choice at that time. I point that the terms have not changed. It's a fairly simple contract that's in your package that's attached. Instead of it being a four-year contract this time, we're asking you to approve a two-year contract. The legislative session's right around the corner relative to Mr. Hill and the work that he performs on behalf of not just our city, but many cities. We've been well satisfied and comfortable making the recommendation to renew for an addition to your term.
Mr. Robb, real quick, I need to say, I have no objection to Fred Hill. I think he's done a great job. I recall the decisions that we went through when we hired him previously and the other lobbyists that we had. My question, are there any negotiations or any discussions about compensation? I know when we hired Fred four years ago, the contract was for $42,000 a year, and we've had him for four years. So we basically paid him $168,000, that's what we agreed upon. This contract is the same terms, it's two years, but two successive renewals, which would be roughly a quarter of a million dollars. And I'm not saying Fred's not worth that. He's certainly been very good to the city. My only question is, if we continue just simply to renew contracts, we're not going to get any negotiation discussion about prices. Was this just something that we automatically renewed, or was there any discussion? Or have we even talked with anybody else about what they might offer us as far as consulting services?
No, we haven't. This was renewed at the same terms that were negotiated again by the staff and approved by council four years ago. No price increase by Fred. And so we were comfortable bringing back the same price for this two-year contract as what the council was comfortable in approving four years ago.
And we will look at it in each successive two-year group.
Oh, totally. And I do think that, again, it's by design that it's a two-year extension, and so obviously council would have the ability, assuming that you approve tonight, to give us some direction in the next 24 months if you want us to go back out and take a look at what the market might have relative to lobbying services before we renew them the next time. Your Honor, thank you.
I'll move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion, not in favor or opposed, motion carries. I think, you know, costs go up every year, and to be able, after this period of time, to maintain the same fee and the job he does is degrading. If he was raising his fee, I think they would be able to start to make a justification. I think Fred's done us a great job. All right, so that's approved. This brings us to the Consent items 16 through 27. They're not scheduled for any council debate. Any guests present can ask that any of these items be removed for further discussion at this time. Do we have any requests? Do we click the holler?
Sure did.
Do we have any requests? If not, item 16 through 27 is consent.
Excuse me, Mayor, I thought you were asking for audience response out of your relationship with the council. I have a question.
All right.
I don't know that I need to remove it yet, but I have a question about item number 24, which is Christmas decorations. And the Chinese with the Gaylord Texan. I'm not clear on what it is that they would be providing, or we buy them. Can we have some more information about this?
We'll get Chris Smith to stand up and answer any questions you may have, Councilmember.
Thank you. Another staff went out there visiting with them, and I don't know that we've heard anything since then as a result of that.
All right. We put a lot of 24, and we'll have that discussion.
Thank you.
And are there any other, just wait for us, any other requests? If not, items 16 through 23, 25 through 27 is consent motion is in order.
I make a motion we approve consent items 16 through 23, 25 through 27, and proceed.
Second.
In favor, all opposed, consent approved. Item 24 is removed now, but here we can talk about the Christmas purchase.
The last information that I recall is that the staff was going to go on visit with the staff at the Gaylord Texan.
That was brought to you was $31,349. Of that, right at $20,000 is the sign, the main entrance sign that will be on the south side of Main Street. One sign. It's basically 20 feet by eight feet, from what I understand, and will kind of be the entry, the gateway into the Christmas capital of Texas. That's roughly $20,000 of that total amount, and the rest of it are some ornaments, some LED things, and some refurbishment of items that they have in their stock.
Are you providing two of us as part of that balance of that $11,000?
I believe that is correct.
Is there a sign that will be gone on the north end of Main Street and northwest highway that's included in this? Do you have any to know?
What I see in the package is one sign.
There is one sign, it's a very large, three-dimensional, it's a shape, it's a very decorative piece, taxana signage, and it will be, and the Christmas tree, the moving of the Christmas tree, will create that entry that the large deer gives on the north end. So to create some balance to the north and south end. And then the other pieces in there that Chris is referring to are really excellent, excellent value. So you're getting a lot more product than what the dollar will value.
Okay, thank you.
Have we not seen what they're planning on buying? You haven't seen it? Well, then we need to remove it. We need to say it, because luckily we're not in fact...
I think I had to do that.
Let's stop, let's lie, let's stay him. It's been like wanting to stay him without going to have ever brought that in. I should have stayed. Really agitates me that you wouldn't even think about doing that. I mean, we had this big workshop last year and looked at all kinds of things. Some things we liked, some things we didn't. We need to know what we're doing.
Yes, sir.
And to ask the council to act and spend that kind of money, why?
Well, in fairness, just the bulk of the money is being spent on the sign that you see in front of you. The smaller, the rest of the funds that are being spent are on smaller items that would just simply be distributed throughout the rest of Main Street. But we will gladly do that.
Give us more information.
We'll gladly do that, sir. So in that case, we would ask to table that item.
The council table it.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chris.
Right. We have a motion.
I'll move that we table item 24. Second. Do we need a tee?
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries.
We'll have on the next one.
Have we?
It's a week, yeah. Okay.
Have the recommendation of the planning zone commission yet? Okay. Item 28.
The planning zone commission approves CU 1413-60.
All right. Consideration is in order.
I approve.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item 29.
CU 1415, Pizza Snob at Airport approves, 6-0.
I approve. Second.
In favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item 30.
CU 1418, the Graywood Lodge approves, 6-0.
I approve.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item 31.
CU 1420 approves, 6-0, sir.
I approve for approval.
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. Item 32.
Final plan is approved, 6-0.
I move the city council to approve the statement finding in the final plan, lot six, lot 1B, chief's property. Second.
All in favor, all opposed, motion carries. That completes the recommendation. That completes the recommendation. That completes our agenda. And Joe Moore, we said he's retiring at the end of this month, and involved a Vineyard Campground that's won me awards every year, had a large number of volunteers employed here tonight in support of him and that project, and we'd like to recognize Joe, this man in the last council meeting, my honor, and my staff. There he is. We'll sit down. Thank you very, very much, Joe. Thank you for attending. We thank you for being with us. A motion to adjourn is in order.
Do we adjourn?
Second.
All in favor, all opposed, council stands adjourned.